Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting July 16th.
I had one thing here. Because Mayor Plackton said that the budget was almost very clear. The committee scheduled to leave from February 24th.
Yeah, that probably wouldn't be good. I'm not that fast. I'm trying to remember. I think that was July 24th, correct? And we'll get back to that. Okay?
Both go through this correctly.
Oh, it's down in other... Right below that a little bit. This is an easy one to mistake. It says substitute council. And council's S-E-L. Probably should cancel. Oh, both are spelled correct. It's not different. Okay. It's been moved to seconded discussion. Any more? Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next item is under petitions communications. The letter from Pioneer Federal about the annual shred day. It's on the September 17th. Just to inform everybody that they give a free charge for people to come in, not businesses, but individuals to come on in. Get rid of their personal documents if they so want to get shredded and protect them. Any questions? Okay. Next item that got put in here under that petition is just tell you several people have voiced that they would like to maybe attend the Montana Leagues of Cities and Towns are having their annual conference in West Yellowstone, October 8th, 9th, and 10th. So, and that's still a little ways off, but not that far off. It looks like it's going to be interesting here. You're going to have Governor maybe, and the Attorney General Tim Fox, and a few other ones coming down to talk with the municipalities. So, if anybody is wanting to go, I can't remember the deadline of October... Before, that's when it is. But come talk to me and we'll get you signed up. Okay. Next one is just to inform everybody. I put this memo out. It's just for your council's information. Mr. Rockter?
I appreciate your benevolence and always looking for feedback. Typically, I submit all my attendance. And, you know, it's always... Is there a different way for...
Oh, no, that's...
...that team to get that process done?
Nope, that's fine.
Okay.
This is more contracts and proposals. The agenda is the way everybody's been doing. It's fine. This is just so we don't sign up to contracts and nobody knows about it. I don't... And I get in trouble. That's what I don't like. I don't want to get in trouble. That's all that's about. American Red Cross wanting blood donors. If anybody is interested in donating their blood. They're going to be at the National Guard Armory on August 7th, so tomorrow, from 1:00 to 6:00. So, if anybody's interested in donating some blood, they're pretty low on it, they're saying, so... Okay? Next item, I don't... I put it in here because I don't think you really need to approve unless you so want. This is more your information to show on you. I didn't get... I think they had one more meeting before this. I'm trying to dig up. And I'll have it in next month or next meetings packet. But this is to just let everybody see the main street here, what they've been going through. Just to keep everybody informed and mainly get it in so we can keep it as public record. Okay? Uh, next one. I really didn't get the letter, but she came in before or after the agenda was published. So, this is a request for city support for the local spay neutering clinic. And that was Suzie Brown. If she would maybe stand up for a little and describe what she wants to do, then we'll assign it to a committee if we so want.
Well, I would like to know if the city could help us with the cost of a... Well, it's called a free spay neuter clinic for the community. The only problem is it's really not free for... Somebody has to pay for it. It's just the people who own the animals that are coming in don't have to pay for it. We ask for donations, but we never get very many. I have not had a free clinic for about... This will be the third year without one. And the reason I stopped having them was because some of our local veterinarians felt like we were having too many of them and it was costing them money. They were losing clients. So, we kind of backed off trying to help, you know, because we have to work with these people. So, we stopped having them. And three years ago, I had two litters of puppies in a year. Then last year, I had five litters of puppies. This year, I have 11. Well, 12 counting the litter that came in today. So, I'm going to go back and have at least one clinic a year. Just because it is expensive to spay your dog. But there's not enough homes for all of them. And so, people try and give them away, but then eventually they end up in shelters. And so, by having a free clinic, we're just alleviating the birth of so many babies. So, unfortunately, with the economy the way it is, I'm not getting the donations that I need to pay for one. They run about $3,000 per clinic. And when it all, you know, comes down, it's about $27 a dog or, you know, dog or cat. Because we usually do about 100 to 150 animals during that day. So, it's not a horrible cost when you kind of break it down like that. But coming up with $3,000 as just the shelter is... For at least this year, I just don't have the money to do it. I'll figure something out, and I don't expect the city to pay for all of it. I just am asking for a portion of it, whatever you guys can do to help. I have asked the county as well. Haven't heard back from them either. So, that's kind of where we're at. Does anybody have any question?
Have you set a date for this?
You know what? I haven't got a... You know, written in stone date, but toward the middle of September.
So, then I would follow that with a question. Could we refer this to Finance Committee and put that in the budget?
It'd either be Finance or Health and Welfare is where I was thinking of assigning it either one.
It appears to me that we should maybe think about having a recurrent annual thing in the budget, but if that's something for the Finance Committee to kick around, I would think they're in the throes of working budget now. Maybe that'd be appropriate, but I could take this under. I may put that... Do I need to make motion to that thing?
If the chairman or the board or committee would...
You know, I would say that would be an operational decision if they want to put something in the budget for that. And then it would go through the process. I mean, that's fine. If we want to have it in the budget every year.
So, I would evolve all of that.
Well, I would think you would go to your Health and Welfare Committee. If they decide the city wants to be involved in it, then bring it to the council. Then it goes to the mayor, and he'll find a line item for it, and then it will go to the budget.
Well, I believe that's right.
Okay. If the help will take it on.
Suzie's in commissioning, and Monday we're going to have a resolution to put this thing on the ballot.
Or, yeah, for the...
What the question is, so if it goes to ballot, it is voted on by the total population, which the city people would be involved with too.
But that's not until November.
No. It's not... It'd be the ballot thing being voted on in November to go into the next budget year.
So, you're talking the year for the...
She's looking first. It's this year.
And we were talking.
Okay. That's where that thing is on Monday. It'll be decided whether it's going to go on the ballot or not.
I'll give a new mic and we can...
Yeah.
See if the county wants to pitch in for this year.
I wrote the county a letter because I had more time for them. I only had like, what was it, 10 minutes with Mike? So, I wrote a letter to the county. So, they, you know, they have time to deal with it. I just... I didn't have any time when I came to you guys. I didn't have any time, so...
Well, Mr. Shaker, the Health and Welfare Committee.
Yeah, it's Mr. Shaker, I think. And so, he'll set up a time. And will you give Suzie a call?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Question number, Suzie?
It's the office number out there is 683-8119, and my cell number is 925-1512.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report to the city council. First item on that is street closure request for the Blacktail Station on August 30th. So, that'd be on the Labor Day part.
I would move approval.
Been moved to seconded discussion? Call for your question? Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is street closure request for the Naughty Pine on three days, August 30th also, with the 29th and the 31st for the chunk of Panic Street from the alley to Montana Street. That'd be Labor Day, of course, again.
I would move approval. Second?
Been moved to seconded discussion?
The only thing I have to say is they plan on putting hay bales out. So, we've got to make sure that they have the right way through there. Where you're... The street area. I guess the other thing I would... And I've heard some complaints. They're not really cleaning the street very well. There's a substantial amount. I hate that. Maybe if we tell them, they need to get out there and sweep it up.
Well, that's what that $250... Now, we'll have to make sure they clean it good. Tell them if they don't, they'll lose some of that. Mr. Rockter?
Just had a quick question for Mr. McGinn. The Department didn't sign off. Do you have any problems with that?
Excuse me, everyone? No. Called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is a put in front of you, Area 5 Agency on Aging Contract. Last year, there wasn't... He just signed it. This is an ongoing year by year. This is how much money that the Area 5 is giving to the City of Dylan with their grant. And we have to have a contract, as always with contracts, and we're going to put in front of you guys. So, this is kind of a standard, ongoing one.
Move to three.
Been moved to seconded discussion? Question? Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, next one is another contract in front of you that's sort of going through the budget part. But as it was before, we were... We hired an individual to do cleaning part-time, and we're wanting to put that as a contract service. And that's what the budget shows now. So, this is a contract that we set up with them.
I would move approval of the contract for statutory services? I have a question.
Okay.
Does this cover the library, did he?
No, this is just City Hall. The library has their own through the library board. Their own budget may have their own person that they have. This is just for City Hall. Called for a question? Okay, questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, next item. There's two packets or two documents in the packet. But what it is, is the main street that I had those minutes out. What they're trying to do is get some additional money to try to help fix up downtown, some of the streets and that. But to do that, they need a matching grant or matching fund to go with it. And they've obtained $1,000 from another place, Fearhead Economic Development, if I say that correctly. And they're asking for $2,000 from us, the city, to do it. Also, we need approvals of the two grants that they're wanting to submit. So, we can do it separately if you want or all in a bunch.
I would put them all together, and we grant the $2,000 expenditure for the matching fund and the approval of the two applications.
Seconded. It's been moved to seconded discussion?
We've talked about this before.
There's no... We didn't have official recommendation from the street. Now...
I guess the one thing that I wondered is, you guys did the eighth line out down on Slendale. Will that come out into the street that far that there will? So, that will help the visibility there when you come up to the street step. I like that.
Yeah, and that's...
That is a dangerous area.
That's good for something.
Now, that's...
Excuse me?
That's sort of what they're asking for, but that's also going to come in front of the Street and Alley Committee again, because that's using part of the CTEP money too. But this is separate. This is actually trying to go for other grants besides just CTEP to help fund some more stuff with it. And that's what tonight's thing is. But they will come in front of the Street and Alley Committee. I think it's on your agenda.
Next Monday.
Next Monday for that, if you don't mind. But yeah, they were talking. What they're wanting to propose is to do some changes with the sidewalk and that to try to help visibility and that. Right, and this money would all go into helping all of that part. But they're all little parts together. Maybe if there's anything I didn't cover well...
Add a little bit to it.
Come up here.
Come up.
Donny Jones. Main Street.
Because it's hard to hear if you don't come up.
Come here.
Yeah, that's what we...
Schoolteacher voice. I do. That line is probably the minimum that it would go, but the engineers will be visiting with on Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Will be the ones that will actually decide that. But when we had our main street meeting, Craig did those lines just so that we could visually go out and look and watch the traffic when they come down the road and how they turn and all that. But the actual size will be determined probably by the engineers.
I have just commented. I like how that's going to happen with this. I come out that street all the time, and to see right or left, there's been so many close call accidents. It's unreal.
Right, and that will be our model corner. So, we'll try to complete that with lamps and garbage cans and benches and interpretive signs and a whole bit so that we can eventually have enough money to move on to another corner. And hopefully someday do all the corners.
And why I want to add something too is it's in the packet, those grants.
This is grand.
Oh, sorry. I'm reading sudden. The information about that's in that grant packet, because after the model project is conceded, then we'd like to add it to the master plan. So, later we can go and ask for funds or grant funds to create another block. So, it just kind of tripled up that. So, that's why I think that happens.
This is the start of that whole process to try to get more money to help the streets and that, so...
Okay, other questions?
I appreciate all your work on Main Street.
Can we encourage any of you to come to our meetings? And we usually tell the city, say, seeing them guys wondering we're having a meeting, usually notify people. So, if you'd like to come, we'd be happy to have you.
Okay, questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, there we go. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a memo from Chief Mr. Crab regarding 48-hour policy and my request to change all the community regions to at least 48-hour notice with the agenda posted.
You have... Thank you, Mayor. I do. Now, I was asked to look into the citizens' right to know, public's right to know, and the public meeting notices. And the first place I went to was the City of Dylan website. In there, if you'll punch some pull-down screens, that gives the council policy, the agenda policy. And as I was reading through that, everything seemed to be on the up and up until I come to the last sentence in that policy. And I'll read that sentence to you. Says, "The only exception to this policy will be the Finance Committee's monthly report on claims and line item budget." My first thought with that was, why would we have a policy that exempted the one committee that generates the most public interest? So, I decided to look a little further into it. In there, it says that it was passed by the city council in May '84. I was unable to find anything on that. The next one, it says that it was revised by city council March 1993 by Resolution 721. And that same one more pull-down screen from that is Resolution 721. It's not in the format that came in your packet, but it is there. And it says that it was approved, and it doesn't use that language in 721. Nowhere's in 721 does it use that language. It exempts the Finance Committee from those requirements. So, I looked a little further into it, and the next line said that it was revised by the city council at a regular meeting held February 1 of 2006. So, I did some searching for that, and I was able to come up with the minutes from that meeting. That minutes from that meeting are in your packet as well as the agenda from that meeting. And I decided to include in the agenda or in the packet, the agenda from that meeting, because I happened to look through the resolution index, and I come across Resolution 960. And if you look at the minutes of that meeting, the Judiciary Committee presented to the council for a vote, that they changed the time limit of posting for the meeting from 24 to 48 hours, which was a good thing. It was a great thing. I find nowheres in that report or that minutes from that February 1, 2006 meeting, I find nowheres in there that they're using the language that was used in what I found on the city's website. I again returned, and I talked earlier about Resolution 960. 960 is the resolution that has that language in it. That language is inconsistent with everything that I've ever read in regards to the open meeting laws and the public's right to know. I just don't see how that the city council... I can't find anywhere where the city council voted to have that instituted. It's just not there, folks. It's not there. And I'm not, I'm not here to point fingers at anybody, but what I am telling you is that it's not right. The public has a right to know for each and every committee, and I would strongly urge that we make this right.
I have a question.
Sure.
Help me out here, maybe. The Finance Committee viewing the hours and all that, it's a recurrent, monthly occurrence. It's posted, I believe, out there notifying the public that this meeting is over on such and such a date of each month. Wasn't that satisfying? Noticeing required, how about you?
Well, I think he's getting down to the list of here...
The line I...
That we hit on council night. So, you know, I don't have a problem with what Paul was saying. The only thing I know is the administration will have to move things back at least 48 hours for the council or the committee to do its work.
And I've talked to the staff, and they would have no problems. We have a system set out, if you so deem, to do that, and it's highly recommended by me to do that. It would be nice if you had it scheduled for Friday before the meeting, and we could have everything ready by then. And we'll inform all the vendors that our deadline, when the deadline will be, and so they can get their bills in before. And we'll have it structured that some of the printouts... We can do it. We'll have it. It's all... We can make it with no problem. So, if you wanted to set it like Friday at 1:00, and we'll change the agenda, because the agenda isn't quite right either, in my opinion, because you've got to actually state that, that you're going to look at the claims. That was never stated. He just said on the agenda that it's a standing meeting, and we need to state that you're going to look at the claims. Plus, you've got to have in there by the law that you have to have a public comment for any items not on, da-da-da, and that doesn't have it on there either. So, we've got to fix up the agenda, but also the administration can handle the 48 hours. You can have it on Friday, no problem.
I move that we ask Mr. Bill to do a resolution setting out what the policy will be for the Finance Committee meetings.
But I think that excuse me for jumping in here, but I think that not only for the Finance Committee, but for all subcommittees of the council.
Well, yeah, I mean, the resolution says...
It's good for everybody. It would just be good.
Okay, go ahead and restate it, because it already states all committees are 48 hours, but go ahead and restate it.
We restate the thing and have it brought forth for next meeting.
Restate for all the other committees, be clarified on the Finance Committee.
Okay, it's been moved.
I have a question.
Seconded discussion and question, Mr. Rockter?
Shouldn't it be the claims reapproved?
Right, because they're looking at approval of the claims. Well, we'll put it on the line up there for the claims. So, I agree.
You can do that and draft a little language in the resolution.
I think Mr. Rockter had a question.
Oh. Mr. Rockter?
I'm good.
Call for a question? Oh, wait a minute. There is no question. No, the motion was made in a second. There is a question.
Write a resolution.
So, the motion is to write a resolution to have all committees in 48 hours? So, the motion is to write a resolution to have all committees in forty-eight hours. Public, excuse me?
I'd like to maybe add a little...
May I say your name and who come for it?
My name is Mary Graham. One fifty-six West Bank, which has been there for fifty years. I'd like to make a motion or not, like, to suggest by law, everything you guys talk about has to be available forty-eight hours before. You can't come put the agenda on the thing and then show up here and get the paper you're gonna be talking about. Like, for instance, this last meeting, you guys had, you talked about all this stuff, or requested copies of what you was gonna talk about today at the meeting and they were not available yet. J.S. passed them out at the meeting. The stuff you're talking about has to be available forty-eight hours before the meeting. When the meeting is posting, everything you're gonna do action on has to be available at that time, at posting time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Draper, sorry.
I, I appreciate your comments, Ms. Graham. At that meeting, what was handed out was the, uh, budget for the Street Maintenance Committee, which had been handed out approximately two weeks prior to that.
That's correct. I requested it right before the meeting at City Hall, and the girl at City Hall told me that was not available at this time. She did not know for sure what you guys were talking about. When I asked you about it, you didn't know for sure what you was talking about because you said you...
We were talking about street maintenance.
Right, but you, but you said you didn't know what the projects were because J.S. didn't give you any, you didn't know if there's any projects yet or not.
Correct.
Right.
And the...
All of that, right. All of that, well, all of that was hopefully available at the time of the posting.
Okay, we'll make that so. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Call for the question. Question's been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Dolan, he was wrapped it up for next meeting. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the resolution. Well, let's move it if we can. It'll make more sense if we can move the Street Nally Committee meeting or the minutes and that up to this point. Would you mind doing that? Because that's sort of recommendation from the Street Nally to do the resolution. We don't mind, Mr. Draper.
Not a problem. In your packet, uh, is the minutes from the, uh, July twenty-fourth meeting, so which I would ask your approval?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just briefly, we had two task orders from DJNA that we brought before the committee. One was to get the engineering work completed on the alley behind the Billmark. And the second task order for DJNA was the final work on the Cotton Street, which was SID thirty-seven, to get that completed. In addition to that, Mr. Turner, Director of Operations, updated the committee on the various traffic congestion areas we had talked about at previous meeting.
Now, if I, if good, I'm looking for recommendations to approve the task orders to do the two task orders. I would move those two task orders to be approved. Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the two task orders? Questions been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Uh, the, um, next meeting is held on July thirty-first, and at that meeting, uh, we were discussing was on the Street Maintenance District, uh, public budget. It was presented there. Revenues for, oh, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Minutes, I would ask for your approval.
So moved. Seconded. Been moved and seconded for approval of minutes? Discussion? Call for the question.
So I didn't see me.
Mr. Draper?
I, this is actually the last item on the task order for the Cotton Street.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
How does the city, um, plan to deal with the fact that School District, uh, does not believe that any work needs to be done on Cotton Street?
Well, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow with the approval now with the council to hire the engineers to help with this project. We're gonna have the administrations gonna discuss with the engineer, uh, the alternatives. We had an original meeting, uh, about a month ago, about, about a month ago with, uh, various people, staff, Mr. Kraft, Mr. Dolan, J.S., myself. And we had the superintendent down there, the chairman of the, uh, board. Who else? Bus driver, uh, Mr. Ferguson, and Bill Allen. So we had a bunch of people down there, we're discussing what we could do to actually start using SID thirty-seven, the Cotton Street, as it was designed to be done. Oh, Matt, Matt, the engineer, was there too, Matt of DJNA. And so we're talking and we came away after a lot of discussion, and I think we pretty much came away with a conclusion of what to do. It was gonna be very low cost. The engineer was supposed to work on that, but this work order was gonna be is to draw up a little scale. We were gonna add like ten yards, not cubic yards, but ten yards, thirty feet, maybe a sidewalk, and take one little chunk of the fence down. That was all everybody then was gonna sign off, and it was still gonna be safe and used as designed. And then I just got a letter from them that saying the school board had a meeting and threw it all out, saying we're not doing anything. And he didn't sign up for it. So we're having a discussion tomorrow with the engineer and decide what we can do to present to you guys then. And, uh, being that that letter came to the city, it is a public document, uh, so if anybody needs a copy of, since it is a public document, uh, we can be sure.
And is the city believe that you can go ahead and do something without approval from the School District?
Ten. Uh, we've had, we've had a few discussions, but, uh, we're not there yet. It's possible. I mean, it's a city street.
What time is the meeting, Paul?
It's ten. Ten, ten o'clock.
Ten thirty whenever it gets here.
In the office here, Mr. Kraft?
I get that it's a city street. I've been all along to the school just to hear the name.
It started out that way, but a few years ago, the city has took it. They, they assigned it to the city who accepted it. I can't remember the date, but it was fifteen, twenty years ago, maybe. Don't, don't vote me on, I can't remember. But I did remember seeing the resolution. I just sort of remember the date of it.
So I think we oughta give the whole damn thing back to the school.
Now, the only, and the only thing that I would actually ask is the city transferred some money from that. We put in ninety thousand dollars about, roughly, okay? I would ask that they pay the ninety thousand dollars from the city's money back if we do that. Well, I don't think that, you know, they could pay off the SID. Or they can assume the SID from us, whichever way works. That's an option, and I'm not against that option. You know, with the attitude they have with, let's, let's, we'll have a little meeting tomorrow with the engineer and, and Mr. Kraft and Mr. Dolan and J.S. and myself and at ten, ten thirty tomorrow. We're just not sure when he comes. You're welcome, you know, to discuss what's our, what's our alternatives at this point. With the letter that they sent us, which pretty much said, "We're not doing anything and you can't tell us." I'm paraphrasing, okay? But paraphrasing that it is pretty much a letter saying, "We're not doing anything and you, you're lying that I didn't agree to it, plus, or, you know, we're not going to do anything and you can't tell us what to do." And any more communications between me, you talk to my lawyer. Okay.
Where's the meeting tomorrow?
So, but, we, Dr. Graham, I really wasn't the sub chief. Did I answer your question? Yes, very good. Now we'll go back to the minutes of the July thirty-first Street Alley meeting.
July thirty-first, Street Alley Committee meeting, uh, in the chat fifty, and then take ownership for...
Seconded. Okay. In case it wasn't, but you've done, thank you. I couldn't remember if we had it on, so it doesn't hurt to do it again, so. Been moved, seconded, discussion? Call for the question? Questions been called for. All those in favor of persons minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Just a brief overview, uh, during that meeting, uh, J.S., Director of Operations, uh, presented the tentative Street Maintenance and suggested budget to the committee. Revenue was projected considerably under the, what the expenditures are for that department, a shortfall of about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So we discussed the different ways, uh, that we could alleviate that deficit. In addition, Chief Kraft also talked about the traffic issue down at the Safeway parking lot and the truck traffic getting back out of the home and getting back out of the town.
And from, Mr. Knight?
I noticed on here you have, is our taxes were about a dollar eighty or what? I think a dollar sixty?
They are a dollar sixty. Actually, when you look at the resolution, that was corrected on, uh, issue of, uh, after the meeting, I believe, Mr. Turner researched that.
David researched it, gave me a call, and it was my fault for coming up with the bucky for some reason. I knew it was a buck sixty, but I kept saying a bucky. So, so that was my screw up there.
And so, although the committee recommended two seventy-five, I said I didn't see a problem such that since the vote is with the council, okay, to actually put in the resolution two fifty-five, but if the council so wants, you can still put it two seventy-five in a motion. It doesn't, that's your prerogative. So, but we put in, to adjust for the twenty cents, we adjusted to that, but if you so still want two seventy-five, all it takes is a motion, a plot. But we're looking at, now we're back to where, item number seven is a resolution establishing the costs of the Street Maintenance Districts and a resolution of intent to adopt and improve the assessments for proposed scheduled projects, so. Mr. Draper?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This, this document did come out of the Street Nally Committee, and at that meeting, I did say, you know, make the notice for the increase in the, the tax, although I did vote for the recommendation to move it to full council. You know, at the meeting, I really felt it wasn't really that different ways that we could make up that difference. The, you know, the one item that was brought forward consistently was, we just need to raise the tax. You know, so I actually myself, you know, I'm gonna have to vote no on this resolution. I think we need to really look at the budget, you know, a better way to make up that deficit.
May we have a, may we have a motion for discussion?
No, we'll move to approve. Somebody seconded, so we can discuss.
Right, right. Okay, it's been moved, seconded, discussion, West.
Uh, I guess my question is, are you asking that this should be table for tonight and go back to committee for more discussion? The, our budget, to try to find ways to resolve it in the budget?
Well, I mean, I'm, like I said, I, I can support it myself. You know, we, we have it in a motion before us. Somebody would like to table this and send it back to the committee or administration for, for the...
Yeah, I guess I was just taking that from the second half of your bill, but perhaps we'll look at the budget more and see what we could do.
I would think that'd be the best thing. That's a, that's a pretty hefty increase for, I, like, I have eighty-five by a hundred and seventy-five lot, you know, so, and I'm on a corner, so that maybe is quite a step in the past.
For my... It's my understanding. J.S., correct me if I'm wrong, the linear foot is based upon the linear foot of the alley that it puts in the property, is that correct?
It's the front.
Front. I'm sorry.
The front.
Footage. The front footage?
Just the front. So whichever, whichever of your house spaces, that footage.
I see.
I would have to agree with it. I am a little uncomfortable with this. So I would like to table this and send it back to the administration to, uh, to leave works and numbers to bring forth to the finance committee. Okay, it's been moved to table?
Mr. Dolan's?
Well, the motions are... Some motions on the table. Do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion? Mr. Dolan? The statute requires that the governing body, the chair of the council, has the resolution establishing the costs of the maintenance district. The manner in which you pay for them is a separate, uh, issue. It does require, and the statute does require that you just recognize what the costs are in the district. So there's a little difference between recognizing the cost is one thing, which is, I think, what was done at the Street Nally Committee and then doing, you know, determining how you wish to fund it is another. So I wanna make that clear. Mr. Draper?
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. I, I, I know what the statute says, I mean, that's been talked about ahead of committee. My question is, do we really know what the cost is? I would say no.
As far as the costs that were submitted in the budget of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, that was the cost for this fiscal year.
I agree.
Mr. Draper?
I would respectfully disagree with that because I, I think those are the numbers I would ask the administration to really look at and move.
Mr. Knight?
Yeah, I would have to agree that they know, uh, very... I think we should try and find other ways.
No guarantee, but, you know.
Yeah, I'm just saying, try. At this point, uh...
Mr. Draper?
Yeah, but I would like to get back to Mr. Dolan's question because I think by state statute, uh, we do have to have a resolution by a specific date or...
Shall establish a cost in Street Maintenance.
Yeah, but is there a specific timeline? We, we need to get this completed by?
Yeah, um, I believe, let me see, second Monday, August, so we're, at this point, we either... Next Monday. Yeah. But here's, let's say this, if you may, we could put, what could work is if you assume what, what the budget is, and we're not necessarily doing the two fifty-five, you can, you can, if I'm not incorrect, let me just put it forward. Projects that we've laid out, which is pretty simple, some snow removal in the winter, okay, some, uh, street repairs, filling potholes, you know, a chunk of money there, and, uh, chip seal. Because that's the three... Because that's the three single projects. They're not really projects, they're just doing the work. If we come out and assume or make it, not assume, assumption, oh, projection, that that's what we're going to do, can we just instead of saying you're going to charge 255 linear foot, can we just say we're going to do those projects in the resolution, change the resolution to say that and then vote on that tonight and then come later on the money on where you're getting it?
Getting rid.
I don't like that.
Okay.
I, I, what I'm thinking is, the people have a right to know what we are charging.
Agreed. And I...
That's wrong.
It's not been the first time, I'm sure that this day has been moved fast, so our city or many other cities, so let's table it, you know, that administration report the numbers, finance committee will try to work from there.
So you want the administration, if this gets tabled, it would then go to the administration and come up with numbers and then present it to finance or Street Alley?
Street Alley.
Or Street Alley?
Street Alley.
Okay. Mr. Knight.
Just a question, if we got someone's money back from the schools, that's all.
We gotta get them to agree first.
Doesn't hurt, but the money that was transferred to the schools came from the bond, that street maintenance bond. And that's really where a large chunk of this money, that $1.60 that is being taxed now presently, that raises about $240,000. About 190 of that goes to paying that bond. And that'll happen for 10 more years. So that leaves $50,000 to do street repair, which is nothing. That gets blown through fast. Okay, so that's, I mean, we can, you know, that's what the council wants, we'll make do it 50 or we'll come up with some other numbers and do that and say what our options are. Mr. Archer.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I think we can get creative. I mean, if we have a deficit to, we need to figure out, we can do that without increasing taxes, or at least that much.
Okay.
Calling for the questions.
Just a second, sir.
Mr. Ranci, make sure we're tracking this correctly. The Street, last Street Alley Committee meeting started to forward this idea of turning 275 linear foot to the full council and now both you and David who were at that meeting and voting for that are suggesting it get sent back to the committee?
Oh, after the motion is, would be to table it, send it to the administration, who then will work some numbers and come back to the Street Alley Committee.
But isn't what you asked me to do last time?
Well, but they're asking us to do it again and come up with some new numbers, another option.
New numbers on costs or new numbers on the linear foot?
Well, both, they're sort of related.
And this is because you don't believe that the costs are correct?
Not just that it's tax and people more.
Yeah, and I'm saying we need to look at the cost to make sure they're correct and inappropriate.
Because it seemed very cancel with the charge of the 915 bills, but it was discussed a lot and 275 was decided on pretty much by the committee.
Well, I'm taking it, they're sort of asking to verify that the numbers are correct before they vote to decide to do that, is how I'm taking it. So I'll go through and we'll calculate and verify the numbers and then... Mr. Archer.
Yeah, and, you know, at the meeting, that was what was proposed to the committee to make that deficit. And, you know, we could have left it in committee, but you don't want to do that. This is very important. We need to get this resolution per state statute taken care of. So we have, we have to move it on to the full council for their input and eventually to...
And now it's just sent back to the committee.
Yes.
But they will be having a meeting Monday and we can adjust the agenda, we still have time.
Yes.
And you can do that tomorrow morning, first thing.
We'll do it.
If you, so if the vote occurs tonight that way, so...
Would you make that adjustment to the agenda if you want to do that?
I can do it if the vote says so.
Questions to call for?
Well, I have a perfect question.
There is.
Well, that's true, then we have to ask questions. Again, ask for questions. Okay, all of those in favor of the table it and send it back to the administration to rework numbers and then give it to the Street Alley Committee at their next meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's what we'll do. Okay, next item on agenda is the monthly revenue report. Looking for approval, move approval. Can you second it? Discussion?
Hold the question.
Question's been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is, just for your perusal, is the citizens' request. It's summertime, so the list gets bigger in the summer.
I do want to comment on one.
Okay.
On 10065 Vine Street, that has gotten increasingly bad and now it's infringing upon the empty lot that's across the street. There's some junk cars there and if he cleaned up his own property, he'd be able to park his own vehicles there. And I know the command, it aren't the empty lot, if there are the stocks that we hold at the end of the town, we'll get kids out taken care of, but this has been a hassle for a long, long time.
Okay. Any other comments on it? Or questions or whatever?
I think Mr. Mazzick did a wonderful job on his lot. Got it all cleaned up. Trained all the trees around by Centennial today. Okay, it's really good. Thank you. Mr. Mazzick.
Thank you. I looked at this property, it is a mess. I mean, it looks smacks of a public nuisance. Would it be appropriate to have a community attorney or whatever and... And they even cleaned that up.
Well, we're going to discuss it at our staff meeting tomorrow morning, which one, maybe a letter, maybe a letter from Mr. Dolan.
There's a couple ways we can go with that. A letter certainly is one option, but I understand it's been an ongoing problem that people complain and then it gets cleaned up a little bit and then kind of back again. It's in time fester, so there is a statute that you can file a public nuisance action that I would have to move. I've done one as a deputy county attorney years ago for such a situation. I don't know that that necessarily applies to city attorneys themselves, but certainly I'm aware of the situation. I'm aware that it's certainly one of these ones that comes in lots of times. It may need time. Well, if I'm not mistaken, the property, they put in most of the on, and now it's down. I think they can break us on.
Yeah, it is.
Do we have a, excuse me, do we have a name address?
I had it this one time, it disappeared by my desk, I can't find it. J S, that's it.
Well, that might be helpful in the discussion tomorrow.
I think I got it myself.
And, you know, he does have, you can get opportunity to clean it up, so a letter from the administration or the, Mr. Dolan, whichever you guys decide, but it's beyond, you know, I can't expect this nonsense or whatever else.
Okay. We'll do. Thank you. Any others on citizens' requests? Okay, moving on, reports of officers of board in the city. First one, city attorney, Mr. Dolan. Do you have anything?
I do. I guess a couple comments. We had a street closure for an event on Saturday that I think was closed prematurely. So I guess for those that are getting those, I would ask that they follow the permit. This one ended up, what, 11:30, I think it was opened up, but I don't think the permit's...
She claimed, this was the director, was it your source, Senator?
That's right.
She claimed that she was not getting a copy of the approved permit. So I think that needs to be an ongoing thing, that applicant gets a copy of the approved permit. So there's no question that they weren't informed exactly or reminded of the times where, in this case, it was approved in March and here it was, what, July? Some things never get so foggy and so on and so, and not only that, especially where adjacent businesses may be affected, I think that they need to be informed and perhaps that could be part of the application that they approve and write you of the controls that close the streets. So there's no question that there's been a mix-up in communications and also that if the applicant, successful applicant is challenged, that applicant should have a copy of the permit on their person. It doesn't matter perhaps if it would be their suggestion, but they just oppose it so that the public can see that there is an official approval of closure of that. So if they're challenged by the public or the law enforcement, this is on their time, so they can point to this right there, there's no question.
I agree with, so we entirely, well, what I said about them having a copy and perhaps posting somewhere or whatever, but on the times as such, they entered the times on the permit.
Right.
So if they can't remember what time they requested, you know, but giving them a copy will remind them.
Yeah, the time was, approval was at four and they started at what, 3:00?
Well, I also think another problem, a problem, it was like you said, what business did not really agree to it? And or did not know about it, let's put it that way.
So how is that to be handled? Are we going to...
Well, I think everybody that's that should sign off on it. If you're the owner of XYZ, you sign it.
I suppose we could make up a... Just make an attachment or what?
You don't know what store owner's busiest day might be or, or anything like that. I mean, we might be infringing on somebody making a living.
So are you saying change the requirements to maybe, just saying might be affected, it's really wide open. How about 100 feet or something like that, whatever number? Mr. Turner?
Can we send this to the committee and talk through this? Because there are a few holes in this street closure special events deal. The thing that we've had, probably, I don't know, 15 of them this year.
They've increased.
They've, they've really increased and I think we need to look at that again.
Well, and I've been looking at it on the judiciary. We completed, we designed a form before and now there are some gaps that we can include on there. And at that time, and I haven't taken time to search for the minutes, but there was an agreement that it would only be for public events and not private parties, so we can discuss that issue again.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. More?
Yeah. I was asked by Chief Craft to review the resolutions that were discussed earlier tonight. I did review them and I do agree with him that I do not know where that sentence came from with regard to the finance conjunction with the resolution. It's not admitted, so I am satisfied as I think Chief Craft is that for whatever reason that was included, we're not able to tell you why, but I would certainly do my utmost to try and correct that in the, in the new resolution. The next thing is that as, as was discussed, we did get a letter from school district 10 or I guess the elementary schools. I did attend a meeting with the mayor, J S Turner, Paul Craft, and some officers of the city, which is not an elected board. We did, I thought, had a constructive meeting about how to resolve that situation and, you know, quite frankly, it's a little disheartening to get a letter like that from, from a school board. And I guess it'll be up to us and the project engineer to decide ultimately what to recommend to you all in terms of the approach to take to that. But, you know, I really felt that we came away from that meeting a few weeks ago that we had really kind of reached a consensus about what, what we could do to finish the project and it's just not, not possible, so.
That's it?
That's it.
Any questions, Mr. Dolan? Okay. Planning board, I have no minutes, so, nothing, no report, okay? Zoning?
No reports.
Director Operations, Mr. Turner?
Well, it was a list of zoning compliance certificates that were applied for and those same ones were issued. I'd also like to say that overgrown weeds are becoming a huge fire hazard. Please cut, remove, spray, whatever it takes. It's one heck of a year for Kosha this year. It doesn't seem to be slowing down any, so if your neighbors need some help, please help them out. If they're elderly, whatever, let me know. I've been cutting weeds on the weekend on my own dime, helping some people out. We've got to get these weeds under control. We have Labor Day coming up. I would love to see Montana Street and these other streets cleaned up. It's, it kind of speaks poorly of how the residents of Dillon take care of their town. I've been on the phone and looking at weed issues probably the last three weeks. Why should I have to be dealing with somebody's weeds? Take responsibility for your own property. So, please cut and spray. If you need some help, let me know. They can get some church groups or, or whatever to help out, so. I guess I'll get off my soapbox about weeds.
Mr. Knight.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is anything that can be done about the old Ford dealership? The weeds are just terrible there and it, it, like you said, it looks hit it.
It does.
When you come in to town.
I've had, I've had to deal with that thing since they closed up every single year.
Last year after Labor Day, we had lots of complaints about the entrance from the used car that place and also Atlanta Street. And Atlanta Street's looking a little shabby too. And last year...
The city has already cut the boulevard all the way along Atlantic Street. That is not our responsibility. That is a responsibility of the property owners. And hopefully that the realtors in this town that sell property will let them know to contact the city and find out what their responsibilities are. Because we have so many absentee landowners in this town anymore and it's starting to look like crime.
Well, last year the weeds at Taco John's Boulevard was cut to here.
I missed one.
And an email to Taco John's corporate immediately got the out of state owner to chop them down.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I get on the soapbox. They can borrow those weeds where people can't work on the front of their house, eating the street, 500 block of Arizona, the black seats is... In the street, five hundred block of Arizona, the flat seats is tall and grows around the motorhome. It's been parked there down in the weeds.
I know exactly where you're.
Sure, dark side should still rise.
Mr. J.
I'm Lynn Giles, I live at seven oh four South Pacific, and I have a suggestion. I had a call from Ryan Norris looking for, wanting to know if I had some community service for some football players. And I had room for ten, and I'm sure there are more than ten. So possibly you could call him, and I'm, I'm thinking it's the middle of August, well before, well before I owe the day, J.S. And maybe you could give him a call and he could give you some clues.
Thank you.
That would be great, thanks.
Hi, I'm Rayanne Sutton. Quick question, can't we send them a bill? Can't you do the work and send them a bill?
We can, but we are losing all of our summer help. We're down to, after this week, we'll be down to just our two regular guys. We don't have time to do that.
Can you subcontract with, like, I mean, there's lots of people looking for weeds, I mean, mowing jobs and all that. Might be a like that issue.
If they want to come to the city and put their name in, that'd be fine. But I don't have time to try to get a hold of these people, or they don't have a phone number. You can't find an address for them, you spend half a day trying to figure out where to send the letter to. And we don't have the, we don't have the resources to take care of people's property. If they would just take care of their own property, and if the neighbors would say, hey, you need some help cleaning up your mess, or, or, you know, hey, real property owner, clean up your lot.
But I think sometimes when we consistently, you know, have all these volunteers that help and go cut their grass and move, you know, cut all their weeds down, do it for them. Oh, well, why should I do it? Make sure it'll be the same thing. I want somebody to come in and take care of it for me. Like, once you hit them in the pocketbook, that's made some pain twice.
But there's a process that costs the city money to do that on every single lot.
Can't you pass that cost on to that person? Let's cost them two hundred dollars to have weeds cut down?
Yes, you can, but there's several steps you have to go on.
And we have to tell them and send them a registered letter. Why, why should we have to go to that point? So they clean up their weeds and clean up their lot? Aren't they responsible enough in their own self to take care of their own property? Without, without the city having to tell them that they need to clean up their property? Apparently not.
The collection, the collection of it then becomes an issue too, because they just don't pay it.
And a lot of the problem is that people have houses that are out, that don't live in Dillon. They're rentals and that, and they just like, don't really care. They assume the renters are taking care of it, and the renters are going, that's not my problem, the owner takes care of it. Obviously, nothing got done. Mr. Nye?
A doctor came to me, maybe this works for farmer marshals. Fire chief, isn't there an ordinance or something that reads and say that this has become a fire hazard? And then they'd be forced to, is that another avenue that is possible? Because I, I know that we put a sheet out on other people's properties, and one of them was told by fire marshal that you were doing something to their land because of this town on fire. They were outside city limits, but he did it in the mean, and now they have put animals on, on.
And that is another option. It is another option. It takes paperwork to do that, to declare it a safety hazard, and then you got to tell them that it's been declared a safety hazard. It's kind of the same, you know, using the ordinance that exists.
Typically put a lien on their properties.
It all costs money.
It's a whole process.
And charge them for it.
And we do, you can charge them all for it, it just takes time.
It's the process of getting paid for it is the tireless one. A lot of times, we don't ever get paid.
The one thing I want to say to Rayanne about cleaning up the streets and the gutters and the weeds that comes out of street names, we're already in a long, got thirty dollars.
Yes, I'm B. De Alley, and I live at three ten South Quarter Street, on the corner. I have been fighting weeds growing up in the street, in the cracks of the street. And I think, J.S., you've drove by, and I've been out there fighting them. Where's the liability if I've used ground cleaner, I've used Roundup, I've used everything? Now I'm to the point of using something a lot more drastic. Where does the liability come in if I start spraying weeds in the middle of the street and I kill the neighbor's trees or their lawn? I mean, it is funny, but it isn't, I mean, I've used everything for those cracks in the middle of that street.
As long as you follow the label properly on the chemical, there is no liability towards you.
So if I go out there with my mask on and mix it up like it says and everything, it's just before dark at night, then.
If you follow the label and all the precautions, there is no liability on it. And I know what you mean, because I spray my weeds in my gutter, there are probably about every two. And right now, it looks like I've sprayed enough.
Yeah, that's my.
It's just a, it's a horrible weed here, and we just have to keep them cut down, try to spray them the best you can. But some people don't do anything.
Well, I was doing really good with the weed eater in my curb and everything. And the city came by and patched up a big hole that was in the street. Everything they patched and didn't use, they threw into my curb. So now my weed eater becomes like a projectile.
Well, they'll come down and clean it up then. I didn't know that we left a mess.
You know, but I, you know, I was just wondering if there's a liability if I go out there with a high-powered chemical tonight and just go walk. Well, standard numbers sold it to me and said years ago it was outlawed. But if I put a mask.
Okay, you're not following the label.
But if I put a mask on, you get up and there was no wind, I'm probably just on the end of dark.
Anything more, Mr. Turner? I'm done. Okay, moving on. Police chief, Mr. Craft?
I have nothing further, sir.
Okay. Fire, fire chief, Mr. McGinley?
All I have is, last night, we had our monthly meeting, we had another fireman resign. Bill Wagner, he taught at DCHS, along with his wife, she coached, I don't know what she did. They got Johnson Drummond left, he was on his department for nine, six years. So last night, we went through the job interview process and hired another volunteer. I think he was here tonight, I don't know.
He was here.
Yeah, I told him to come tonight, just to introduce her, and I asked to put him on the agenda for next. Kind of looking for, for him to be on the fire department. Name of Tyler Landis.
Have the request.
Sign it over.
We'll be on good.
That's all I have.
Getting back to police chief. Our next meeting is the last meeting, I will leave it to you.
Yes.
Hopefully it will be on the agenda to waive it.
Yes. He's working on that. There you go. Yep. Okay. Judge isn't here. And treasurer, no report. Library board?
No report, I don't have the minutes.
And I haven't got them either, so.
I've been working on budgets, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I was at the last meeting, that was a lot of budget. Yeah, it was. Tree board?
Okay, we have a meetings scheduled for Monday at seven o'clock. It is properly noted. Jamie Kirby with DNRC will be inspecting our projects Thursday at fourteen. That's it.
Okay. Any questions for him? Okay, moving on. Now to reports of standing committee of the council judiciary.
No report.
Finance committee, Mr. Spear.
Before you, you have the, the claims and the line item report, can I move it through?
Second. Okay, can move second discussion. Now, what I would like, I also, yeah, I also added to be even more true to the rules, shall we say? Okay, I actually put in the summary of the claims. So now in there, and I'd like to keep that for every month, we'll have that put into the packet.
So you want a separate motion on the vendors?
It wouldn't be bad to have all three added into the motion.
Okay, so let me refer to the motion then. Before you, you have the claims report, the line item report, the summary of the live claims report. Can I move approval?
Second. Good, the move second discussion. Questions been called for. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Now I put on there, under your part, I was given a claim and that was approved, but I wanted to give it out to show the billing, because I was nervous, there's no contract that was approved. I mean, council hired, this is Mr. Gilbert's bill, a claim, he was hired by the council. I just wanted to put it out there, because no contract was ever really approved for him. And I was told last fiscal year that it was going to go five thousand, well, went seventy-five. Because I wanted to get my, my back end covered by the council to know. And if I could have you approve the contract, then I could sign it. No, because it's kind of a, no, not contract, a payment. Okay, sorry.
I moved approval of the claim, and I think you can sign off on that with the rest of it.
Yes, I mean, I just, you guys really made me nervous on what it's, so it might be going overboard on itself, but. It's been moved, and a second discussion. Go take it, for the question, Jude?
Hi, my name is Jude Davidson, I live at six forty-nine Kentucky Avenue. So Mr. Gilbert's bill, that seventy-five hundred dollars, he's worked on his own contract. There's a fee for four hundred and three dollars. Three days later, there would be two hundred and fifty dollars. Working on some contract, I mean, you could pay him thousands of dollars for doing that? That's not a conflict of interest or something?
I, I was told that's kind of standard practice with lawyers, when you hire, you pay work their contract. Is that right, Mr. Tolan?
I have the contract as far as.
And then also, if you don't get a lot of these charges, it's break, you break, you warn, you warn, break, you warn, break, you warn, you warn, you warn. Why, why are you repaying all these, all this money? And I'm probably wrong, but I thought those cases were closed, like in January.
No, 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 they were not closed then. They're closed now, but not then, they were not. They were still going on, I'm trying to remember.
I thought it was something about the interest or something, I didn't know that. But they're still going on, in, in July, they're still going on.
No, no, it's over now, it's, it's over. They got the final last paper that closed out the permit in, in July, so it's. Yeah, yeah, so it's, everything now is officially closed, there will be no more bills.
So the council could vote and rehire him to do that?
Well, if they so want, they can, well, if they so want on another project, they could hire him again.
This concludes his contract.
Well, the four, the four projects.
The four obligations that we set out.
Okay. And then a question is, and this goes to all of the city council members, what is, I'm not going to say your job, I know it's volunteer, you're elected, but what is your purpose? What, what does a city council person do? Well, I was under the impression.
We're the governing body, but we make all decisions for what is done in the city.
I was under the impression that we have four different wars, and that you would, you would represent some of our feelings as to how we feel about how things should be handled. But people get to make their own personal decision, and you just discuss it amongst yourselves and don't involve the community? I mean, I know y'all want to make a better voice in the community, but.
We don't literally discuss.
That's why you're standing here, so you're involved. You have that opportunity to begin involved, and everybody has an opportunity to get involved. We have, we, we have, we post the agenda, and the public has an opportunity to come in here and get involved in the discussion, and then we listen, take another advisory, then we make a decision.
So the letter that you attracted to that judge in Missoula, that you said you didn't have a meeting, but everybody signed, but Mr. Nye, that you said you didn't have time. It clearly stated that the mayor, you know, in the city, we didn't want to hire Mr. Gilbert that, but you could make that decision to do that.
Well, they hired him for the four projects. The reason, the reason we hired him is because he had so much work into this already. And the new attorney said he didn't feel he could take it off.
Okay, I understand.
Okay?
Okay, I thank you.
Thank you.
I think that if I could call my council representative and ask her a question, or that person a question, they should be able to be cordial and answer me. When I attended the second meeting, I was in awe when you slapped your hand out on the table when our new mayor said something about the agenda, and you said, that's enough. And when I called you, you said, I don't have to answer that. And I was just hoping that you'd be representative, but that's enough.
Present, present the, talk to me, and not to a certain individual.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Another one's in the back.
I'm Ed Butcher, I live at three three five South Dakota, and it's along the same line as me. But I just want to let you all know that I should care how enraged I am with most of the city council. The minute Duke Gilbert was no longer a city attorney, or within a week, whatever, you voted to get him back on these four, I think there were cases. And I, like Jude, have, for months, I've been under the impression, or known, been, been told that these, that just about, nothing major left. But they, for some reason, they had to keep Mr. Gilbert on these cases, bypass our perfectly capable new city attorney. And as you remember, I don't know, was it about in March, when Craig Cornell came in and gave a good talk about what in San Diego had already gone on? Spending something like sixty thousand dollars to recoup less than three thousand. And the city, for a woman, the people in this town are sick of it. Since then, he has earned another, actually, it's seventy-five, hundred and something plus, there was seven hundred paid in April, over eight thousand dollars for these things that were almost done. Over cases that it was admitted were grudge matches for the old mayor, shouldn't have been going on. But this council has fought harder to keep Duke Gilbert and these cases going. Even as Jude mentioned, some undercover work, setting out of the judges, they don't want to amend it. So I am enraged, and this is our taxpayers' money. So now we've spent something like sixty-eight thousand on these stupid cases. All the satisfied mayor mouths, this grudge match, to recoup three thousand dollars, something very long.
There was, the Jones case was involved in that, so was the Johnson case, that was all in that money.
I started to add those up to my, but I mean, you broke the square.
Mr. Tolan wasn't comfortable taking over, but he has been involved in, so.
Yeah, I, he didn't have any probably charge, unless he'll charge J.T. thirty-seven dollars for a couple-minute phone call or a little message. He obviously doesn't care about the city.
Now, it's not bringing your own, it's not bringing from his own thing.
But, but I, he's, he's anyway willingly done it. But I am angry, and I don't send him on, I won't get in trouble, but, I mean, thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Any other? Coffee and question? Questions been called for? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you. Next item, health, fire, Mr. Shaker.
No report at this time.
Next one, cemetery parks, Mr. Croson.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the last meeting. Cemetery report was a good, or obviously, we, there was a couple items there that went out off the council, and I'm not blocking this time. One was, uh, surveying the cemetery, completion of the survey. Was building a fence on that new survey line. And I've since visited with Mr. Turner, and he said that that has been included in the budget. I hope everybody's okay with that. And, uh, the other thing I would like to say before the council is, I think there's a need to get on with annexing that cemetery. And I would hope that, that the council would approve this, and go and bring aside and start to work on that, and bring that to fruition.
Well, let me comment on, we did put in the budget for the survey and for the fence, and it's going through the finance committee. We haven't done cemetery yet, but we'll get that one next Thursday. They'll probably be doing cemetery to go over and, and see on that. On the other thing, my, this is my personal, I'm not really sure why you would wanna annex the cemetery. Or I'm not sure if you can, in my opinion. Because, I mean, as soon as you annex it, then things change with it. So, you know, now it's sort of in the county, so if somebody wants to celebrate, to go out and, and have a drink with his dead buddy, you can't. If it's in the city, no drinking, he can be arrested. I'm not sure if the police would do that, but, I mean, the street, the, the roads in the cemetery suddenly now become city streets. But, I mean, but that, that's just me, I'm not really sure where annexation gets
This discussion has come up in the past a couple of times, and planning board has discussed it, and some of the issues that you've raised have been researched a little bit, not finished. There also was a, um, annexation policy resolution that I still have on my computer that really needs to be done. And there are reasons to annex the cemetery and the lagoon. And, um, you can start to finish the research and do this.
Well, I don't mind, we assign the city attorney to look into it, I don't mind doing that.
It's my understanding, it's my understanding that, that one of the advantages of annexation, it, uh, makes a more comfortable environment for the city police to go out there and shut the gate and do it more specifically. Is that correct, Paul?
Well, who knows about shut the gate? Uh, there've been some complaints in the past about speeders and the dog issue with, you know, no animals in the cemetery. Those are just, uh, those are cemetery regulations still. There's nothing criminal about that, then, at this point in time. Annexation may help, but then again, uh, like the mayor says, you're gonna have city streets in the cemetery.
They've become private roads. They don't really come city streets, but, you know, we can go into that.
And I'm not sure, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it certainly helps for more enforcement, a little bit.
Yeah. Good.
Two.
Annexation really, if I say this, is really a thing the planning board, you're doing, what they had to do, and so forth. And this has always come up at times, in the planning board and various things, so.
You know, if the cemetery misses
The work of Mr. Dolan, the chief, what we need to do and not do.
Okay, well, it's, have it assigned to the planning board? Or may have the meeting mad, look into this annexation policy?
Yeah, I don't have the, the resolution for the annexation policy. It was probably three years ago.
Okay.
My name is Jude Davidson, I have a quick question. If that's considered streets, can you close off those streets? I mean, if it's considered, if it's annexed, can you close off the cemetery still, so people can't go in?
Well, that's a question we'd have to figure out. I don't know. And that's something that I would be worried about, if you can permit or have it at certain times, you know, standing closure, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, well. And then it'd be under Mr. Turner's jurisdiction?
Uh, sure, I'd, uh,
Okay.
Well, probably the chief of police, probably more. But some of it would probably, some parts of it would fall under Mr. Turner, but also the chief of police.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's been assigned to the planning board for looking into it and get stuff working through. Anything else? Okay, take that note. Uh, next one, we've already done the street and alley, so water and sewer, Mr. Cotton. Okay? Okay, we're down to the last. And if I may, before I open it up, I had a few phone calls to the city. Asking some of the staff, certain personal, they're not personal questions, but, uh, political questions. And it's probably best, I told all the staff to pretty much stay out of political, you know? So, I really prefer, nobody really calls them up and ask them political questions, like what would you vote for here? Or, or how would you do this, or not do this? But, you know, any, any, uh, political questions? And one of them kind of was, how about the recall? And I told everybody in my staff to stay out of it. They have their own personal opinions, but, you know, and if they so want, I'm not telling them not to voice if they so want. It's just, I would prefer if you don't call up and ask any of the city staff certain questions like that. Because I pretty much informed them not really to, you know, to stay, better words is to say, to stay neutral, not one way or the other, so. Okay, now open to the public comments.
Okay. I wanna make a point here, I wasn't at the last meeting, and I wanted to bring up an issue at the last meeting in regards to reporting on city meetings, city council meetings. On, uh, July the seventh, though, night daily, I was quoted as saying that I wanted the chief of police to arrest you for this cover. Does anybody here recall me saying that? Okay? And, uh, If I remember serves me correct, Ms. Jaffe was not at this meeting. It was not taped, as I recall. And, uh, so I would request that before she makes these types of statements, or, or that she checks her source. People were accurate, I'll actually say that.
Okay. Well, I was at the one, and you never really came out to ask the police to arrest me. But you did ask, or make a statement that I was breaking state law on open meeting.
I'm not denying, I'm not denying that, but I
And I think some people take that as saying for arrest, and it really wasn't, and I understand that it was not asking for arrest. But, you know, you take it, you say that somebody's breaking the criminal code. It kind of almost implies that, but you didn't say that, I understand, and I think they might have just, not trying to justify anything.
I don't know what her source was, but, uh, I, I would, uh, imply that the recording was somewhat relevant.
Okay.
Mayor, I apologize for using the word arrest. I do my very best to report as the meetings are. I watch all tapes, if I am not at the meeting, I do watch all the tapes. I watch them all the way through. I make it a real effort to report it as it happens, Mr. Croson. And I apologize for the word arrest. And I will make a retraction in the paper on it, that, you are right.
Because I was plugged with this later on.
Anybody else wanna apologize about people being arrested?
Let me, uh, let me jump in. A, a request was made at last meeting, uh, made by Mr. Gore. And gave away on the timelines, on the, uh, the payment of the bill, on what happened there. And so I went through and dug up the stuff and put it down for everybody to look at, so. And then question was made during public comment time, that's why I just waited, I'll hand it out here for y'all to look at. So, I mean, we don't need to comment on it, I'm just, I done my duty, I said I would put out a paper saying the timeline of how everything occurred, so. Now, now, uh, open it up to the public, significant public interest, not on the agenda within jurisdiction city, Mr. Shaker.
Brad Fletcher, three twenty-five South Dakota. Uh, I'd like to know what regulation it is on, uh, vehicles that walk along the road, everybody, just stay there forever. There's one right down there at the police station, got horrific plates on it, expired. It's been sitting there for, I don't know how, in fact, the crew repaying the parking lot out there. Trying to work around it, uh, so that they could get that paid. And there's a lot of other things, other vehicles, shoot, other vehicles that I, I've seen and have never been moved, that I'll later
Well, maybe, Mr. Graff, can you answer?
At, at present time, we are not actively going after those types of vehicles. If we receive a complaint in the office, then we will investigate them and get them moved. We have, generally, during the daylight hours, when it's the most economical to get those moved via record, we have one officer on. So
You didn't need a meter, maybe.
It's a madness, yeah. It's a matter of prioritizing our calls and what needs to be done during the day.
But now, I noticed one vehicle down there, that it was an old van. And the police had marked on it, when it was supposed to be towed and everybody. And, so I went down there about a week later, and all the markings were brushed, uh, brushed off of it. But the vehicle was then pushed back around car around. And I don't know if that warren's been moved, and
It depends on how far it was moved. And if it was driven around the block during that time frame. And I, I can't have, I, I, I don't have the manpower to have everybody sit there and watch each one of these cars that reported to me that isn't moved in an X amount of time. I, I just don't have the manpower, I'm sorry. Uh, we do what we can to enforce that order.
That's why I said you need a meter, maybe.
You wanna volunteer?
I don't know, please.
How about a meter person?
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I do. Oh, it's Mr. Gore. Um, I'm a businessman. And ethics with this, if you don't make money or learn something, get out of it. Last couple years, I've been in city council, I learned quite a bit. And, good and bad. But these last few months, I haven't learned squat. I'm not getting paid. There is no reason for any of us to be here anymore. Rules aren't being followed, this book is practically useless now. The stuff written in the papers, most of it's all false and goes against everybody here. Makes the town look bad, makes citizens look bad, and us. And there have been tough decisions made this last couple months, and I stuck my head out, and Sweet Croson has stuck his head out and gotten all flak. While everybody else ducked and covered. And, second, the recall petition went out, that's what pissed me off. I had enough at that time. I learned that nobody in this town cares, or expects us, or me. So from this moment on, I no longer gonna be there, I'm gonna go forward. I'm retiring from my position of all duties, and good luck to everybody else.
I would like to thank Mr. Gore for his service the last few years. It is, it's a job that's not taken through financially or personally. Thank you.
Even though we had conflicts, I do wanna thank you for your service. I do. Mr. Turner?
Uh, in this room here, the new carpet, the paint, um, if you guys remember what this room looked like before. This was one of Derek's big pushes that he wanted to see get done, and, uh, one of the many that he has had. And I would like to commend him for his service, and thank him a lot, so.
Did my experience, the normal procedure is for the city to advertise for applications for his replacement for thirty days, and then the council would take that under advisement?
Yes.
Take the selection?
Yes.
Maybe we need to get out of that.
Well, I, I think, and this is just going off of, going off of my, uh, memory. But if I remember right, on the state laws, he has seventy-two hours
To change his mind.
To change his mind. And, but it has to be done in the same method that he, uh, did the resignation, and so it's inverbal. So after seventy-two hours, if he hasn't changed his mind, then I will post.
And should he be submitting his resignation writing then?
It's really up to him, it doesn't, I don't, it would be nice if he did, but it's not a requirement if he resigns. I mean, in front of the meeting was sufficient, I believe. But if he comes back in seventy-two hours and says that he withdraws his resignation, that's sufficient. I mean, if he did that, I would want witnesses, just so one person can't say, well, he did, or, you know, but other than that. So seventy-two hours you have, thank you, sir. And after that, I will post.
I would like to say, Derek, thank you for your effort, your hard work, and I'm sorry to see you killed.
I would also like to thank Derek for his work again. For example, like I said, eight months now, I, I, instead of It's, it's a tough position, you know? It's probably you best do. I think you did a good job, and, uh, appreciate your work.
We welcome you back to the game, Austin. Uh, move to Second. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.